Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. The purpose of this meeting is to receive an update regarding budget development. So, I will ask Mr. Ray to do roll call, please.
Fay.
Gotti.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon. Snow. Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Here.
Wayne. Williams.
Present.
Six present.
Okay, with that, we will move to our one information item, D1A Budget Development, and I will call upon Mrs. Kinoki.
President Gotti, Vice President Williams, members of the Board. Wanted to give you an update on what's going on with the 2015-16 budget and then what we have planned for 2016-17. Our total general fund budget for 15-16 was $557 million, and our revenue projections are showing that we are approximately $500,000 under budget. So, it's coming in the way it should be, and we're right on track with our revenues. Our current taxes and delinquent taxes in lieu of tax are approximately $14 million under what we had budgeted to receive, but with our state receipts, we're receiving $13 million more than what we anticipated. So, it kind of canceled each other out, and that kept us on track. Currently, we're under budget on our expenditures slightly, and so we're hoping that that continues. The schools have done a really good job on spending. Principals have worked hard, and everything seems to be working out this year. So, we're feeling good heading into the next school year. So, for today, I wanted to talk about the budget calendar, give you some information on revenues, assessed valuation, review the state aid information, look at expenditures, our preliminary increases, and our preliminary reductions, the revenue cash flow, and then also questions and feedback from you as well. So, for our budget calendar, we're having our budget workshop tonight. Property valuations are certified August 20th. When we developed the budget for 16-17, we were using the estimated valuations that the county assessor gave us back in April. So, there is a chance that the value will go up because of the change in Turk, what they provided for the property valuations, but we didn't count on that when we developed the budget. So, it's a conservative budget that we're putting together for you to review. The learning community common levy proceed certification is September 1st. The publication of the budget hearing for the OPS and the ESU will be September 5th. And then, we're planning on the budget hearing for September 12th and the adoption on the same day. But with the holiday, I'm not sure if that changes our timeline or not because of the holiday falling on a Monday, so we may revisit that later. September 20th is our budget filing date, and October 13th, we have to have a resolution setting the taxes and the tax requests with the county clerk and auditor of public accounts.
So, I guess I would just ask, would you be ready on September 7th, which would be our first board meeting in September?
The...
For to do the budget hearing and the budget adoption?
I think we would be ready. So, if you would rather, you know, that would probably be helpful if we could do it sooner that way if there were any questions or concerns.
Before the 19th?
Before the 19th, yeah.
Okay.
So, we can redo that if that's the case.
If that works, I think that might be best for...
Okay. So, that would move back the publication five days from the 7th, so we'd have to publish on September 2nd and then have our hearing and budget adoption on the 7th.
Do you have to have five business days or just five days?
Five days prior.
Five days, okay.
Okay, so on the preliminary revenue projections and our projections of expenditures, we had minimal increases in the discretionary funding for salary because of salary growth, so we didn't increase discretionary funding at the buildings as much as we have in the past. We're trying to keep that about the same as what it was last year. We are continuing to monitor our fixed costs like insurance and utilities and all that, and we continue to have conversations about needed investments like textbooks, technology, planned obstacle lessons, professional development and all that. So, our general fund budget increase, what we're anticipating is an increase of 4.66% which is approximately $26 million increase from last year to this year. And the salary increases with our three-year contract are creating a tight budget climate for schools, so we're trying to keep that in mind as we prepare for the following year as well. So, when we were developing the budget for 16-17, I'm just going by the areas and what happened in each section. For elementary, we actually decreased their FTEs by 45.27, and that was because of the movement of the sixth grade to middle school. But even with that decrease in FTEs, their budget still increased by $5.4 million. Middle school, their FTEs increased by 77.52, and their budgets increased by 8.6 million. High school stayed about the same. It increased by 4.86 FTE, and overall, their budget increased by about $3.9 million. Alternative programs, their FTEs increased by 11.34 for a $1.2 million increase. District operations decreased their FTEs by 3.96, and part of that was due to the transportation of some of the staff there. And special education, or no, CIA decreased by three FTEs. We moved three supervisors from CIA over to the executive director area, so their FTEs actually decreased. And then, special education decreased FTEs by 5.13, and what we did is we moved six FTE from PTOT to the grants, so that's what happened in special ed. And district-wide facility increased by 82,554, and most of that is because of utilities. The general finance and administration increased by one FTE, and that's for the attorney that was agreed to be hired for the legal division. And we, there's actually a decrease in general finance, but that's because of a decrease in the E rate that we're going to be receiving. So, overall, there was a decrease. The Board of Education decreased by $13,000, and that's because we're not budgeting for the election this next year. As I said before, the EDs, their budget increased because of adding three FTEs to their area, and then we also increased supplies for the area as well because of the additional staff. Alternative education, they increased by three FTEs. Human resources increased by 5.22 FTEs, and that's because of the risk management moving from operations over into human resources. And then, we had inter-fund transfers of about $2.7 million. So, all of that added together adds up to be the 26 million that I talked about, the increase from last year to this year.
And just so that anyone listening or understanding understands for the record that those increases don't mean that that's exactly what that person's salary is. It's the increases in salary for each of those areas that we're talking about. So, elementary, while they decreased, the salary increases were...
Yeah, that's absolutely...
I think that's probably really important to understand.
Yeah.
And maybe, I know we talked about it in Budget Committee, and I don't, I know I see Mr. Wakefield back there, but if maybe you could explain to the Board why that decrease in elementary, why the increase in middle would be more than the decrease in elementary? Just so that everybody on the Board understands why that was?
Yes.
Because I think that would be a question people might get.
Yep.
There are several factors that would lead to that. One is the middle school schedule is vastly different than an elementary schedule with both electives and teachers teaching one subject area and rotating through subject areas. So, the staffing in the secondary looks very different than in elementary school. We also took this opportunity to adjust for class sizes where we may not have been able to in the past due to limitations of building size to do that.
Does anybody have any questions on that component of it? Okay. Thank you for explaining.
So, we made sure that the buildings were staffed appropriately, and that was our first priority when we were doing the budget, and then we moved on to the operations of the administrative and all the different departments that we have. So, our budget, as I mentioned earlier, for 15-16 was $557 million, and our preliminary increases, we have our approximately $26 million. So, that would make our budget for 16-17 to be approximately $583 million, and that equates to a 4.66% increase. The parameters that we used when we developed the budget was that we had an average negotiated contract increase of 3.5%. And then, the valuation of the learning community, the preliminary values that we got in April was that it was going to increase by 2.7%, and that the valuation for OPS would increase by .74%. These amounts may change after the county board makes their decision on what they're doing on the valuations, but we were using the preliminary numbers that we got from the county. The learning community common levy, 15-16, will be the last year of the common levy, and that is 95 cents. And then, the Omaha Public School levy would be 10 cents above that. So, those are the parameters that we used when we were developing the budget. Now, one thing that we have to keep in mind as we're developing budgets for the next few years is 16-17, the overall increase in the package for the teachers was 3.3%, and that equated to approximately $1 million that we had to account for in the budget for 16-17. We have a three-year agreement. This is the second year in 16-17, and then the third year, the package increase is 5.5% which would be about $14 million. So, when we're budgeting for 16-17, we're keeping in mind what our obligations are going to be for 17-18 to try to make sure that we have enough funds available as we're moving forward. There's also an unknown in 17-18 is what's going to happen with the state aid when they certify that, what's our value going to be when we're levying for just the OPS district levy. So, those are some things that are unknown. Also, you know, what happens in the legislature this next year, we're not sure what's going to happen at that point. So, we're trying to develop a budget this year with keeping in mind what's going to be happening in 17-18. So, for our budget for the general fund, salaries increased overall for all employees by 4.34%. Fringe benefits increased by 6.18%. Purchased services were increasing by 4.71%. Supplies and materials, 2.14. Capital outlay, 10.92. And then, other accounts would be .27%. So, that's what adds up to be the 583 million that we have budgeted for 16-17. So, the revenues to support the expenditures would be property taxes increasing by 1.94%. And that's keeping in mind that we're using the value that was given to us preliminarily in April. That could change when we get our new values certified to us. Then, other local, we had a question at the Budget Committee meeting, what's included in other local? And that includes fines, licenses, motor vehicle tax, car line tax, interest, those type of things. So, we're anticipating for other local that there would be an increase of 5.6%. State aid had increased from 15-16 to 16-17 by 6.14%. We're hopeful it increases again in 17-18, but you don't know what's going to happen, and we'll have to see, you know, what happens in Lincoln. Our other state receipts were increasing by 12.43%. As I indicated earlier, our relief to property taxpayers was higher than we anticipated before, so we increased it a little bit to take care of that. And then, also, our special ed receipts were slightly higher. So, we're trying to have a good estimate of what we think our revenues are going to be to balance the budget. Okay, over the years, this is showing what our increases in the budget has been from year to year. In 2012-13, it increased by 4.9%. 13-14, it went up by 3.26, and then there was a spike of 10.73. We dropped it down last year to 3.94, and then this year, we're anticipating an increase of 4.66%. And again, most of that is because of contracts that we have with staff moving to the salary schedule and the movement of staff on that schedule. This is just a pie chart kind of showing where we're spending. Property taxes equate to about 45% of our total revenues, and state aid equates to about 40% of our revenues. So, the rest is other state aid, which is like apportionment and, what else is it? And then, other local, which would be the fines and licenses and those type of things. So, one of the questions we were asked previously is to align the budget to the strategic plan, and I have some examples of what I've gotten from other departments to show you what we're thinking of doing for the strategic plan and ideas of how to illustrate this. We also have, we're going to load the budget for 16-17, the preliminary budget, onto Open Book, and then Open Book is going to have pie charts showing a summary of each department, and then you can drill down and see what's in each of them. So, we're trying to have that explain a little bit of what expenditures are and what's going on in each of the departments. So, this is an example of what communications did with their strategic plan alignment, and so they're showing what they're spending... No, this is the EDs, I apologize. This is what the EDs are showing on how they tie to the strategic plan and how the percentages work out. So, I was just wondering, you know, for you to see what, how you want it tied to the strategic plan. Do you want to see each department tie their own budget and show you what strategies they're addressing in their budgets? Another one example is human resources, showing how they're tying to the strategic plan, and this is just an overview. It's a summary of it, and they're showing how they're tying to it. And then, also, district communications has theirs as well. So, I didn't know if this kind of met what you were hoping to see on the strategic plan or if there's something different. We're hoping with the open book and the pie charts that are shown on there that you'll be able to get a lot of information from that as well. But we can also add narrative to this or give you just summary, but we'd like your input on that sometime if you could let us know how you want to see the strategic plan tied to the budget.
So, we... Mrs. Fay.
And I told Connie this before the meeting because this is something that I had specifically asked for in the budget meetings, and I think this is really good. And I think that it's more than just, you know, sometimes what we see when we ask for different reports to be tied to strategic plan, it's just sort of loosely linked with phrases and statements and things in the plan, but this is really more than that without being by individual... I told her I don't need to see individual departments, that I'm not, maybe some of you do, but I'm okay with this level of information. But I also think it shows exactly from the level that I need to see it, what we said we were going to do, where the priorities were, and how the budget is tied to that. So, I don't know, I'd be interested in what you all think about that, but I think this is exactly what we asked for on the Budget Committee.
I would agree with you, and I would just say that sometimes when you get too much narrative, no one's paying attention anyway. And so, from my perspective, our job is really to be at that higher level. Our job is not to be down in the details. We're hoping that that's what all the staff that's here working is doing. And so, I like this, and it shows where the priorities are at, but how the money's being spent. And so, I think that's pretty informative as well as what Open Book provides and breaking up pie charts.
Yeah, that'll really give you the detail, the Open Book will. And then, everybody kind of has a different take on it, so it's not going to be uniform for each department, but that might be good to see what, you know, how they perceive it and how it's moving forward, so.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Scanlon?
I think, excuse me, if there's a, just a very, very short, like two, three, not paragraph, sentence, I'm sorry, explanation, just so those that, you know, like to see the pie graphs but also like to hear, you know, just a brief explanation of why, you know, things have gone up, things have gone down, I think that would be helpful. But again, very concise and doesn't need to be more than three, four sentences, and if there's a big change in something from year to year, maybe an explanation because that'll obviously, from year to year, things will change based off of needs.
Okay. Yeah, like, you know, for human resources, obviously, most of what they do is the EAP and hiring staff and all that, so it, yeah. I can, we can add that in there. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the ESU budget. The budget that we've developed for the ESU meets the total levy limit of 1.5 cents per $100 of assessed value, and it includes funds received from OPS to support the district's technology and printing operations through our inter-local agreements. And then, it includes funding for software and computers for the virtual school and also includes some funding that we have set aside for the PeopleSoft upgrade. So, overall, for the ESU budget, preliminary expenditure summary has us decreasing the rent for the ESU by $22,000. We have IMS support, project management, network management, all those things. The virtual school is actually a negative, and what we did is the staff that are working in the virtual school are going to be paid for out of the general fund. So, there was distance learning budgeted for in the ESU previously, so we took those expenditures out and moved them over to the general fund. So, that's why you see a decrease there for the virtual school. And then, we increased print and publications budget slightly as well. So, the total increase for the ESU is $1.5 million from last year to this year. And our 15-16 expenditure budget was $23,550, and 2.5 million of that was a drawdown of the fund balance to make the budget balance. So, it actually was about $21 million, but we are drawing down some of the fund balance. So, if we look at last year's expenditure budget plus our preliminary increases, the total preliminary budget for the ESU for 16-17 would be $25 million which is a 6.43% increase. And then, the revenues to support it, as I said before, we took 2.5 million of the fund balance last year, and we'll have to take about $876,000 this year to help balance the budget. Our property taxes will go up about 5.5%, and then, we have our core services that went up 7.31%. Our inter-local increased as well, and then, our federal sources increased too. So, to balance the budget so that our revenues and expenditures equal, that's what our budget is for the revenues to support operations. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Kinoki? Mr. Scanlon?
I guess just, I'm not 100% certain on the, for 2017-2018, when the common levy ends. Have those funds not been finalized as far as? I'm not sure. I mean, has that been the percentages given to us or what we can expect, or is it still to be determined?
Still to be determined. So, what we're using in our budget development was what we were given an estimate of in April. So, you know, we've heard that some of it is increasing. I believe some of the other metro schools are actually taking the whole increase in account for their budgeting because they need the revenue. So, we chose to not count on an increase because we thought it'd be best to be conservative in this estimate moving forward. So, if there's more property taxes coming in, you know, we don't necessarily have to levy at that levy, at that amount, you know, we can maybe reduce something, but we're, you know, just really trying to be conservative.
And has the state aid been determined, or is that still in limbo?
It's still in limbo. 2017-18 state aid will be certified in March, and then, we'll try to project what our property taxes will be at that point when we move into the next year, which is why we're being conservative this year because we want to make sure we have enough funds available to honor our contracts that we have with staff. Because, for example, the teacher's contract, it's a 5.5% increase in 17-18 which would be about $14 million in addition to what we're spending this year. So, it's a pretty significant increase. We're also negotiating other contracts with employees that could have an impact to this as well. So, you know, we have the state aid that may be in limbo. We don't know what's going to happen there. We don't know what's going to happen, the value. And then, we know we have these contracts coming up, and so, we're trying to take that all into account as we're developing this budget.
And I think my last question would be, how long have you been, I forget how long you've been in the budget?
Business?
CFO, no, no, just the CFO for OPS?
For OPS, I've been here a year and a half.
Okay. How comfortable are you with, you know, the budget and everything now that you've had time to kind of analyze it and see where we were and where we currently are and where we're going?
Compared to where we were, I feel very comfortable about where we're at. You know, we're able to make some changes in spending patterns and what's happening, what we're charging, you know, for example, like indirect costs hadn't been charged to some of the grants before, and we're making sure we're doing that. We're moving some staff over to federal funding versus general funding and that type of thing. So, we've made some changes internally on just how we're accounting for things, and I think that's made a significant difference on the revenues we have coming in and how we're budgeting. So, and also, the buildings have done a really good job managing their budgets. They haven't overspent their budgets by a large amount, and so, we may actually not spend as much as we had budgeted to spend this year. So, that's a good thing, too. So, we're keeping an eye on expenditures, making sure we know what's coming up, and so I feel like we have a pretty good handle on everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. I couldn't attend the last budget...
I couldn't attend the last budget meeting because of the schedule shifting. But of the 2016, 2017 proposed increase of 4.66%, how much of that percentage is actually going towards the classroom or direct effect? So, giving you an example, high suspension rates in OPS, how much of this percentage is actually going to that direct cause?
I was showing previously our expenditures.
Sorry, I was late too, so.
That's okay.
I think page five, page five, Mr. Snow.
Yeah, if you look on page three, it's a summary of our expenditures and things that we're doing. And many of our departments here in TAC actually had decreases in their budgets, but we made sure that all of the buildings were funded with their staffing, and we even, in some cases, increased their staffing to make sure with the class sizes and everything that that was all accounted for. We don't have it broken down by the suspension and that type of thing.
You don't have it by departments?
No, but I can get you that if you'd like.
It's fine. Quick question, with the Office of Diversity and Equity, has that budget increased?
Yes, it increased slightly.
How much?
From last year. It increased by $35,000 from last year to this year.
What's the reason for the increase?
Supplies and materials, and I think, I think it's textbooks and materials that they're distributing. We also have the Minnesota Humanities, that's not in this budget, that supports that.
Yeah, but that's not, I understand. Thank you for that. I see the increase for this year, I see the increase from last year when we were on the budget, and I understand this might be kind of late bringing up this conversation, but I feel that it's needed. When your budget increases, and even if we can pay for it, that's fine, I still see there's a heavy presence of TAC here, and I understand we put a lot of people and switched over, but I still believe that we have a heavy presence. And this is something that, because this is just a workshop, if you could get me this, how much money we spend on secretaries and the TAC building alone?
Okay. We can get that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Evans?
Just as a kind of follow-up, follow-up to that, that has certainly been one of our goals, is to not increase in TAC as much as possible, because we agree with you that the more we put in buildings and the more support that's out there, the better off we're going to be. So, we understand that, and we continue to look at, and some of these items even demonstrate that, that we're continuing to look at, how do we create more efficiency here so that we can put more resources there? And even when I think about some of our principals' comments on that Critical Friend report where they said, kind of, implementation overload and maybe a little heavy-handed at times, which would mean, again, less people here, more people there. So, we're on the same philosophical bent, I think, on that, it's just trying to determine where to massage that, still get the work done, but understand the limitations of how many people we're going to have, whether it's operations, budget finance, curriculum instruction, HR, all of these offices here. And so, but our goal is not to grow them, so I appreciate the comment.
Does anyone have any other, anyone else have any other? Mrs. Underwood.
I just wanted to mention, I really like the pie charts, too, and the connection to the strategic plan. I think it makes it really clear and straightforward for people looking at this. My question is in relation, kind of, to what Mr. Snow was asking. So, it looks like, for example, the Executive Director slide includes, the pie chart represents basically the human resource expense, so it's got, you know, salaries in there, and then, the next two exclude the salaries and benefits. I just wanted to make sure, as you, as we, will that be reflected within open book, or is there a way to make these maybe a little more apples-to-apples from one department to the other? That's my only question, is if you're kind of switching from the budgets within those departments to the human resource expense within the departments, that maybe we make that a little clearer?
We could do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Open book will give you a lot of detail when you drill down into it, so they can tell you, like, how much is spent on salaries and each of the account codes, but this is more, you know, rather than, if you just looked at salaries, it would take up most of the graph, you know, rather than, like, what they're actually spending or what their focus is, so.
Oh, that sounds good. I'm good with that, as long as it's kind of explained within open book.
Sure.
Any other questions that anyone has? Mr. White?
I know we projected a transportation increase. Where is that increase on Slide 3 at?
That would be in District Operational Services, and we had budgeted for a $1.2 million increase in transportation. But transportation also had a decrease in their FTEs of 4.96, so those kind of offset each other. But there's a 2.71 transportation contract increase, and then, a salary increase, so that, that's that total budget increase for them of $4.158, is because of all those things being included in it.
So, on the elementary one, it says minus 45. Where are those at?
That was when we moved sixth grade to middle school.
So, that 45 number is reflected in the 77 number?
Yes, and in fact, middle school increased even more because of the schedules that they have in middle school. They need more teachers for specials and those type of things. So, we did some adjustment for the buildings to make sure that if they're, if they have overcrowding or more students in a classroom, we split them, so there'd be more, more teachers in the building.
So, the 77.5?
Part of it is because of the movement of sixth grade, but it also includes additional staffing.
Do we know the breakdown of what that means, what that cost was?
Sure, I can give you a breakdown on that.
Yeah, but we just had Mr. Wakefield explain that, I think, before you got here, Mr. White, so.
But I'm just asking for a breakdown, so I can.
By building, is that what you're looking for?
No, just overall, what the exact breakdown and the cost of that move to sixth grade reflects. So, the district operations and move to sixth grade, two different initiatives by this board, the 1.2 was the student assignment plan, increased transportation, or does that include the sixth grade movement?
No, that was just transportation. I didn't break down each of the divisions and operations. It's just a summary of operations. Overall, it increased by $4.4 million, but within that, transportation actually increased by $4 million. Let's see, maintenance increased by $185,000, so there were some changes. Maintenance increased because of the 48th and 5th property, having to, you know, staff that building, so if you want more of a breakdown, I can give you that for operations.
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to get a, because we made decisions off of projections that, and I just want to make sure that we're budgeting according to those projections of the middle school movement of sixth grade, and then, in addition. So, if transportation increased by $4 million, we're only saying that district operations increased, excluding transportation, by $400,000 and $420,000, so all of that's transportation increase?
Yes, all of that's transportation increase.
But that also includes the increase in pay.
Yes, salary increases.
So, 1.2 million was for that change in distance related to the student assignment plan, and I think the remainder, what Mrs. Kenoke is saying, related to the change in the contract, the increase in contract, correct?
Yes.
And that's the increase in contract, if you're referring to. What I'm asking about is, what did it cost? What are we budgeting for, or what do we think it's going to cost us for the movement of the sixth grade and transportation of a student assignment plan?
The exact cost for those, we can break that down for you.
And then, it mentioned special education, a decrease. What area of special education?
They moved the PTOTs from the general fund to a grant, so that reduced their FTE.
To a federal grant, or to a?
To a federal grant, yes.
Okay, that answers Mrs. Underwood's question about reflecting on the other side. And then, CIA?
CIA's actually decreased, because they had three supervisors that were moved from CIA over to the executive director's area.
So, I want to talk a little bit about alternative education then. Is the only increase we're talking about is just the net, the net, the plus-three FTE?
No, that's up above. The alternative education, like the Career Center, secondary success, that's an increase of 11.34 FTE.
So, what's the difference between alternative education, alternative program and alternative education? I mean, I know they're separate, but is that, do they not all fall into the same department?
Well, the programs are actually with the buildings, and so, and the.
But all the test scores and everything go back to the high schools?
Yes. So, that would be like Accelerate, Independent Study, Adult High School, those go back to the high schools. The alternative education, they're the three FTE increase.
They all go back to the Career Center.
Yeah.
Classroom, they all do. We had talked about this in the committee meeting, I guess I thought we were going to combine them, but.
Yeah, because I'm confused. I mean, I understand what it means, but if somebody asked me, I.
Yeah, I should have combined them, instead of showing them separately, because that is confusing.
And then, the last question I have is, the executive director support plus-three?
Yes.
Can you just briefly explain those for the record? I think I understand, but.
So, that was the explanation, and I think you missed that as well, the move from CIA, those three supervisors, and Mr. Evans has talked about that before, maybe Mr. Evans could restate that?
Sure, I'm happy to. And just one more note on that transportation, before I lose my thought. Part of the increase, and I'm sure we can break it out, was inclusive of, we've got four schools that we're putting at temporary sites, because we're demoing the buildings, so.
That wasn't part of the bond?
The transportation cost? I don't think it is. We'll check and see. But there is additional cost for that, so we'll double-check that and see if we can't break out all those two for you as well. The other piece on the EDs, we just transferred internally, the staff that had been CIA to ED, so it's just a matter of movement of FTE, existing FTE. Specifically, we assigned them, as you recall, we had the workshop on the REACH schools, where we added extra supports to our highest need schools. That's where these folks are assigned. And so, we put them, didn't embed them in the school, which is kind of what Mr. Snow was talking about, putting them in the schools, but we really tightened their focus on specific schools. And so, that was part of what we explained at the REACH meeting as well. So, we're actually anxious to see all that, as it's coming into play now this year and this next school year. I think we'll see great results.
But that's not the minus-three out of CIA, though, on this chart?
Yes, that's the minus-three. They were supervisors in CIA for elementary, and they got moved over to the executive director's office to help with the REACH schools.
So, what's the difference in the amount?
The dollar amount?
Yeah. It's almost double, or $200,000 more.
And that's because of supplies and materials, because they needed a bigger budget for operations, because they had more staff.
And when you say supplies and materials, is that discretionary funds, or is that?
Discretionary, yes.
So.
I imagine that's for training and workshops and that type of thing as well.
So, three people got an increase of $200,000 in discretionary funds?
Some of that is reflect, the numbers that are here, and you missed that, I think, at the beginning, reflects the increase in pay or the net pay change in that entire department, so.
Okay, so I would like to know what the discretionary budget is to answer the question that Mark asked for equity and diversity, being $35,000.
We added $25,000 for supplies for them.
For each of them?
No, total of $25,000 we added for supplies.
So, what was their, what was their, so I guess what I would like to know is what each department head has for supplies, materials, and discretionary?
Okay, we can get that for you.
And what's our current cash balance on our rainy day fund?
Our fund balance, I think we're at, I believe it was 10%. You know, we had to have a, we're between 5 and 15%, and we had it at 10%. It looks like if everything goes well, we might have maybe $5 million left over at the end of the year that we hadn't spent, that we could put back into the fund balance. But we also have to cover the depreciation fund, which is purchasing buses and all of that, and then, we also have our contingency fund. We leave some money in there to cover unexpected expenditures, those type of things. And then, also, we may have to be contributing to the retirement system to help shore up that, so anything we have left over, we'll try to plug in some holes that we have ending the school year.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for providing this information to us. It's getting, I think we're getting better and better each year with what we're getting, so thank you so much. So, let the record reflect that the workshop adjourned at 6:19 PM. Thank you. Thank you.